Okay, it is 7:05 and we are going to call the October 14th, 2025 regular meeting of the Tuscarawas Township Board of Trustees to order. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And we'll call, please. Sue Fisher, here. Trudy, here. Jonathan.
Here.
Laura, not present, and Lori, here. Okay, thank you. Board member, conflict of interest? No? Okay. Public comment on agenda items, if you have any, will you please step to the podium? Yes, sir. You, oh, you don't have to, Pat, you're clear across the room.
My name is Pat McGinnis, I've got a question concerning Agenda Item 10D.
Yes, sir, what's your question?
Uh, is that the cable internet system through Tuscarawas Township Board?
I'm trying to find my letter. I don't know. I believe it is, and what they're doing is just giving us notice that they plan to request renewal of that, but not until 2028.
The reason I'm asking is because this is going way back, 22 years ago, there used to be out at the Co-op Center, a community access channel. And when we looked at the facilities, it was a very nice facility when we moved back 20 years ago, it was gone, no one had any idea where the equipment went, but the township was still paying franchise fees to operate the center. So my question is, before that's renewed, try to find out where the equipment went, is part of the agreement, just a continuation, and we're still paying for something that the township no longer has access to?
Okay, maybe after the meeting you can loop me in again on the terminology and I'll get ahold of her.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay, public comment period is closed. Approval of meeting agenda? I would like to add, oops, sorry, add an invoice for performance engineering, we missed it when we put the board pack together, that will be included under 10B sewer construction bills, and I have packets for the board members here. Also, under Item 9K, I have packed cover for the board, I have the rapid infiltration base and estimates. And public, I'm sorry, I did not make copies enough, if you would like one, I will get copies to you. And I would like to add Steve Corporon for sewer update before bills in Item 8A.
You done?
I'm gonna look at my notes.
Sorry.
You're fine. Uh, yes, I believe I am.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Approval of previous minutes from September 25th, 2025 special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. And I can, and I'll support that.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Reports, Steve. He's down there, there he is.
Back in the cheap seats. Good evening, Steve Corporon, performance engineers, contract engineers for the Tuscarawas Township. I'm gonna do it backwards tonight, I'm gonna talk about Phase 2 first. The contractor got the last of the pipe and structures in on Barbara Avenue this after, or this morning, and they're, we're doing the rough grading, rest of it today. Their plan right now is Reeve Riley will be here tomorrow on Thursday to do fine grading on Doris, West Dorothy and Barbara, and weather permitting, pave Friday and then probably into Saturday. If, right now, there's some rain forecast around then, it might get bumped to early next week or not, they're kind of at the mercy of Reeve Riley and their schedule, but their plan right now is to not open up any more streets this, this fall. They would get this paved, they would shift over the work that would be done in the next couple of months, the week of October 20th, they'd be bringing a drilling subcontractor in to drill some forest main under Witt Boulevard from Mac all the way down to Birchfield. The following week, the week of the 27th, drill forest main under the western part of Barbara, from the intersection where they've been working out, out West Barbara, and then round the spit, and then the week of November 3rd, drill under the Sturgeon River, over the Sturgeon Island, and then all the forest mains on Sturgeon Island. They're not talking about doing any structures, they're not talking about doing a bunch of excavating, it'll mostly be just doing excavation or bore pits, and then shooting, you know, maybe 500-foot shots, give or take, of this 3-inch forest main in these areas, shouldn't disturb traffic much at all, and then they would just, in the spring, come back in those areas and start connecting all that stuff together, and then doing hookups, you know, curb stops and then hookups for people over on, on that side. The other thing they would do, Walton themselves, the month of November, would be digging in the lift station structures for the South Station, or South Avenue Lift Station and the Mac Avenue Lift Station at the western end of both of those streets. Probably a week or two process for each one of those, as you can see, that's what it took to get the one in down at Doris and Barbara, how long it took Matts to get the lift stations in down close to the water last year over here on the other side. And then in December, try to get all the piping and other stuff done for those lift stations so that when the frost laws come off in the spring, they basically would be running main pipe, you know, starting on Birchfield, then Holden, then South, then Mac. So that's the Phase 2 update now. Phase 1, we're getting close. We had the USDA engineer for the state of Michigan, and with all the federal retirements and layoffs, he's also now, I think, for Iowa and Illinois as well. So he's got a lot of projects he's looking after, but he came up for, on September 24th, for substantial completion inspections for Matt's contract, Elmer's contract, and for the wastewater plant. We got the wastewater plant up and running two days before he got here, we made sure he was comfortable, still coming that Wednesday, knowing that we might not have all the bugs worked out, but things, he was comfortable, and things were running fine. You know, there's a few air leaks here and there that the contractor was working to fix, and they took care of. Today, they had a contractor from Aramite come back to do some reprogramming to get the two, the old panel talking to the new panel, so that they could do everything remotely now, or automatically, instead of having to do the new part of the plant manually by air, or do the air manually. But they, the new plant's been running basically since that third week of September, things seem to be going well. After you approved the change order last month, contractor ran with the billing addition for Blower 3, walls were finished up today, roofing, structural, and roofing materials will be next week. We're well on track to have Blower 3 up and running, probably by sometime in early January. But that's how that's going. What you have on for tonight, you have a change order for Elmer's, that's just changing, changed that substantial completion date to the date we actually did it, just so it matches up with USDA records, and it moves their final completion date to the end of this month. They have Thursday, they're scheduled to do the upgrades at the Arthur Street Lift Station, and that one will be ready to take it. Everybody else has been turned on to authorize basically to hook up to the system, with the exception of those 16 houses that are going to that lift station, and that should, we should be able to let them know next week, they're good to go. There's one for Matt's on there, same thing, just matching up their substantial completion date with what we actually did substantial completion for, and that extends their final completion now to next spring sometime, I forget the exact date I had on there, 'cause I wrote it a month ago, but, because they have, they have grinder pumps that they're putting in now, and so that, that still has to be done. And there's a, can't remember if there was a, was there a change order for the plant? I don't think there was. There was a change order for Walton, I'll get that in a minute. What I'm planning on doing next month, we'll be closing Elmer's out, and I'll be doing a big change order, it's already drafted up, it's got 27 items on it, because these were unit contract prices, so, so much per foot for, for eight foot, or for 8-inch diameter pipe, 4-inch diameter pipe, each structure they put in, you know, it's all done by estimating how much you're gonna do, how much pavement, how much pulverizing, how much gravel you're gonna get. A lot of minuses, a lot of, you know, some pluses. All of those 27, when they balance out, their, their change order, they're gonna come in $20,507 more than what they're currently under contract for, up till now, we've had only $18,915, so a total of $39,422 is gonna be their closeout change, you know, above their contract, that's a 1.4% increase over the contract amount, which is, I mean, I've been doing this a long time, we, we did pretty good. Especially with the conditions we have up here and a lot of the unknowns, but we, we closing them out. Since Matt's is still gonna have to get all these grinder pumps in, they'll have some dewatering, they'll have some restoration work to do, and then the pumps themselves will pay for. But I've, I've got a draft ready to close out everything else that's not gonna change, and right now, they're looking at coming in about $173,000 under their current contract Having said that, what I'm trying to do is tee up what, an option for you to think about, and I'm sure the supervisor will work with you on this, on what your options might be. But hookups have started. The first one was yesterday in the Beach Club, but it was one that needed an ejector pump, currently there are no ejector pumps in the contract. They, they are using the ejector pumps that, that we have recommended be specified. If you wanted to kind of level the playing field, like, treat the ejector pump people as, as best you can, like you did the grinder pump people. I have asked Matt's for a price for at least the first 10 ejector pumps, which would probably be, I'm guessing, around $25,000 total. But if you back that off, right, you know, coming up till now, your Phase 1 contingency was $266,000 and some change, the total change orders right now are $98,135, that's between Matt's and Elmer's, so you currently have $168,000 in your Phase 1 contingency. That will go down by $20,000 with Elmer's, what I told you, their, their change order coming in next month, which leaves about $147,000. I think bringing Matt's in, they should bring you at least $150,000 back to the table, so it's gonna leave you about $300,000 in that contingency. Now, the USDA engineer says, you know, that contingency, you gotta spend that, you can't, you can't, it just doesn't magically go back in your pocket or something like that. The supervisor has identified invoices from previous engineering work as part of the project, it could go back, that, those could be paid back. You could possibly pay for the screen for the wastewater plant, but I think getting some ejector pumps would be a good way to go with this, to help level the playing field, and you're gonna have the money to do it, and the USDA engineer even says, you know, he recommends, when you get to the end of these contracts, buy pumps, buy whatever you need to help you over the next 10, 15 years, get some pumps on the shelves so that you don't, you don't bankrupt yourself if, if you need them. So I'm, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just, I, I'm looking at the numbers, and I'm seeing an opportunity, and I think it's, it's something that really be worth looking at. But the bottom line, you know, we're, we're bringing these projects combined in below, below the contract price, so it's good news anyway.
So that comes out off of the loan? Am I correct? So the contingency was originally funded by the general, by the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. So if we spend this extra money, will we get, will it be additional loan? Or just the general fund doesn't get reimbursed?
If I understand it correctly, it doesn't just go back into the general fund, this is already allocated to the project, you have to spend it on the project.
Okay.
But part of that is that you have $265,000 in invoices from work prior to the, to the agreement that was made, that can be reimbursed as part of the project.
Okay, that's, okay, that's where I'm getting at.
Yeah, so it would do that, and that would still leave you money to do, like, you know, to get some ejector pumps and that, so.
I just want that general fund.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, then the other thing you have on, you have your pay request tonight. We went, because they've reached substantial completion, Matt's, Elmer's, and Grand Jar's Construction were all authorized to take their, their retainage from 5% down to 1%, as long as that 1% covers at least 200% of any remaining work they have, and it does, and it actually came up pretty close to, to the, you know, I was supposed to shoot for 200% of retaining, remaining work, and it turns out that 1% actually was about right for all three of those. So that's, that's why that, those are adjusted in there tonight. We don't know how long it's gonna take to get them paid, because they're on furlough. The last day I heard from our USDA rep was, well, actually, I actually heard from her on the 1st, which surprised me, I did not hear from her on the 30th, so I thought I missed her, but I heard from her from the 1st, but it was, but I'm on furlough by, so.
Yeah, the only one I've heard from is EPA.
Right.
Yeah, we'll see.
After things are approved tonight, I will get the draws in as usual tomorrow, and I'll probably just get another auto office on furlough, passage back, but we're gonna get to our part to get them in, so hopefully, you know, the contractors aren't floating this for too long, so.
Yeah.
All right, and then the other item, the big one, is the change order for Walton's contract. There's a few items in there, you know, just making adjustments, there's some line items we didn't have for, there's some forest main, the one I talked about drilling up Witt Boulevard, I had it in the contract, that was all 4-inch forest main, the first block is actually only 3-inch forest main, because there's only just so much coming from there, but as it builds and you need to go to 4-inch, we don't have a price for 3-inch forest main, so we asked them for that, we got that price, I backed out 300 feet of 4-inch forest main, added in 300 feet of forest main, so there's that. We need some 6-inch laterals with some of the houses we're encountering that need 6, opposed to 4-inch, we didn't have a price for 6-inch laterals, there's a few things like that. The big item there, and I wanna make sure I explain this correctly, we have an opportunity, there's houses on South Avenue especially, on the south side of, of, south side of South Avenue, it's gonna be extremely difficult for them to hook up on South Avenue. And that, there's houses other where, other places in Phase 1 and Phase 2 that it's really difficult for them to hook up, you know, not, not everybody has an easy hookup, an easy flip of the plumbing, if you have to come out the front instead of the back and that. There's some houses on South Avenue there, it's gonna be almost impossible for them to hook up. There's slab on grade, the house, the, the house footprint goes almost to the property line, there's, there's huge trees, if there is a, a small pathway. There's an alley that runs between South and Holden. We looked at that, and it's gonna help probably about 12 houses hook up between South and Holden, and actually, one that's over on the other side of Witt on Holden, where they come out the back. And I ran the numbers using the unit pipe, we're not asking, we didn't ask the contractor for a bid, we have, we have the unit price, we know how much per foot for 8-foot, 8-inch pipe, we know how much per structure, we know how much for gravel, we know how much for pulverizing, we know how much for pavement and that, so I ran all the numbers. The estimate to run a little bit up Witt and then turn and go all the way up that alley and catch, catch these houses in the back is $89,000. We also were able to eliminate the lift station on Holden when we got some easements from the three property owners on Pine Lake Boulevard earlier this year. The savings for that is on this change order, that's a minus $80,000. So if we do this, the net is about $9,000 increase to the contract. I think it's the right thing to do, you know, and I wish we had other options for everybody that had a tough hookup, but in this stretch, there, there's some really tough spots for some of these folks here, and this, this helps that a lot, and, you know, you, you have the funding if you wanna do this, you know, it's not like we're, we're making a big reach. So, and I am prepared to stick around tonight if you want me to, to answer questions during discussion, or if you wanna just, I can answer them all now, I can, I can stick around, my wife's actually back for a few weeks before she heads out again, so the, the cats are not gonna destroy the house if I don't get home, you know, to feed them, you know, I think she already fed them, so.
You guys have questions? Do you want Steve to stick around when we get to the point of discussion of the sewer bills and this change order? What are your thoughts?
I think you explained it really well, and I think when we look at them, I'll, I'll be fine without having to ask additional questions.
You're good. John? We're good? Okay, and we're good?
Any other questions on anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, we got four hookups in, did I say that already or not?
No.
All right, we got CBC, we got one house in the CBC yesterday, one today, and we got two on pipe today as well. The inspector came over from the county both afternoons, we were a little nervous about his schedule and that, and they're not scheduling him to come, but he, if you're, we're letting know that, well, basically, we have hookups scheduled with both of the current contractors for every day this week and next week, basically. So he should be coming, hopefully some of the other contractors will start scheduling people to hook up as well. But that's, that's four hookups.
Yeah, that's good.
Right off the bat, so.
Yeah, and for people that, who, who may not have already reached out to a contractor, it's not too soon to do that, if they're thinking, oh, I'm gonna wait until spring, or I'm in Phase 2, start talking to people now is what I was hearing at the sewer informational meeting. Is that what you would encourage people to do?
Yeah, especially the Phase 1 folks. Everybody in Phase 1 is authorized to hook up now, with the exception of 16 properties that are gonna be loading into the Arthur Street Lift Station, the upgrades are there will be done Thursday, so if that all goes well, then next week we'll let those 16 go into the green side and, and say they can hook up as well, so.
Okay, good deal.
All right, I just realized I left my water bottle, so I'm gonna snag it on, I'm gonna snag it on the way by, so.
I'm just curious, whose phone?
Oh, is it Steve, is that you?
That's probably my phone too.
Are you sure the cats got that?
Did my wi, did my wife text?
I, I, no, I didn't, see, I just, I just saw it sitting here, I go, no, we're worried about the cats.
I would've figured out the phone, the water bottle, that probably got halfway home and I was like, oh.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay.
All right.
Bills.
Bills, so I'll handle the bills. We have 12 invoices for a total of $17,338.98.
Plus performance engineers for?
Yeah, thank you. This one right here?
Yes, ma'am.
43. 43, 757, 25. Make a motion to pay the bills.
Will we have a second on that?
Looked it all over.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, any discussion?
Can I add to your motion?
Absolutely.
I'd like to add also to approve and pay bills with addition to any and all payroll from November on 2024 until October 14th, 2025.
November what and when?
November of 2024 until today's current date.
And, okay, what, what would that be?
The payroll.
Payroll.
I know, but that's from November of 2024. Okay, 'cause it had not been published.
Yes.
I'm sorry, okay.
It's fine.
I'm with you now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, so again, the motion is to approve and pay all invoices as presented here, including the performance engineering invoice, and any and all payroll from November of 2024 through and including October 14th of 2024. Motion made by Sue, supported by John. Additional discussion? I just have a question. It has to do with the Plant Moran invoice. I know we did that engagement letter back in July, bless you. Do we know how many hours and where we are on the four bullet points that Plant Moran said they would help us with?
The invoice that I saw was just the total dollar amount, it didn't have a breakdown on it, and I apologize, I should've emailed her last week when we first talked about it and got the detail before the meeting tonight, so I will do that, actually, I'm gonna email her before I leave tonight, while it's still fresh in my mind.
Okay, so maybe we can have a, we'll wrap, wrap back around and?
I meant to pull up that contract again to see exactly when all was covered and?
Yeah, okay, well, we'll address that in November then, okay. Any other discussion? So again, the motion on the table, pay the bills, including performance, any and all payroll from 11/1/2024 to 10/14/2024 inclusive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Treasurers' report.
Okay, well, on the Plant Moran topic, got an email back from Plant Moran that we are balanced through September on the pool account.
Good.
Finally, thanks to Rachel's hard work and Plant Moran helping out also. Also on here is a check from me, reimbursing me for expenses, I went to the Michigan Township Association's Treasurers Retreat from all over the state, and we had 11 hours of classes, and I learned so much about so many things, I've got notes and packets, and so I really appreciate the support, being able to go down and, and, you know, I met the Benton girls, got to know them better. Benton is, I didn't know Tuscarawas was the largest township in Chabouin County, and I said, well, who's next? And it said Benton, so they happened to look me up, so we always talk about, well, I have 3,660 parcels, how many do you have? So, we're big here, so with the sewer and everything else, it's, I was glad that I went, and, so anyways, that's what that's all about. And then everything else is going great, I was gonna give you a parcel number, lesson learned, in September 1st to September 15th, I should really not have any other commitments other than receiving in taxes, 'cause they just came plowing in faster than I realized they were, they're going to, even though Chris gave me a heads up, she's like, this is a little, you know, we don't have a lot of receipts in yet, Lori, I think we're gonna get hit hard, but I was just like, but anyway, so, I'm, I'm almost, I'm caught up with where I dispersed, I did a 2-point, shy a 2.5 to the school in the county at my last dispersment, so we're getting it out there where it belongs. Nobody pays, there's not the incentive like there is the winner bill. Right, they pay at the last minute, so, that's all I have for tonight.
Did you want me to talk about the KCI?
Oh, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, you know, we pay KCI to mail out our taxes, and I have put in here the proposal, 'cause the board has to approve of my using them, and then we have to upfront them the postage on our, and I'm trying to find it in here, but I should've marked it, thank you. So they estimate, estimate, excuse me, that it will be? So they estimate, estimate, excuse me, that it will be, um, total cost of the project is two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and seventy-two cents. That includes all the postage, all the paper, all the envelopes. Um, I do wanna call into them and see if they have a way of, say, a certain person that maybe has twenty parcels. Is there a way they can match up all of that, you know, the person who has twenty parcels in one envelope for us? I'm not sure if they do that. That was a question that somebody asked me at the, um, at the meeting. So I wanna look into that because that would save some money. So I'm just hoping.
Unless they change. Unless they changed, they won't.
They won't.
Unless they change, you know, things change.
Okay, things change, all right. So yes, I would like to motion that the board approve my use of KCI to mail out our winter tax bills. Estimated project cost is two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and seventy-two cents, of which the postage has to be paid, fifty percent has to be paid, oh, no, all of it has to be paid upfront, which is two thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars and forty cents. And that doesn't have to be paid tomorrow, but it has to be paid in November before I mail them the bills.
Do we have a second? Okay. So the motion is to approve the KCI, uh, winter bill invoice with the prepayment of the postage by November. All, uh, any questions? Any?
We would have to get the, um, that money to them probably mid-October because the bills are mailed, oh, no, you're right, they're mailed first of December.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm wrong.
Well, I remember from last year taking office and having to scramble, get them paid.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay.
No more questions?
Okay, that's okay. Um, any other discussion? No? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Correspondents, we had two letters. Uh, DDA, where's that darn Dan? No, nothing wild hap, well, we can talk about DDA later cuz you're on, we're on the agenda for their bylaws. Still charging after the safe pathways?
Yep.
Yep. Uh, foyer requests, we had two. Airport. Oh, sorry. Yeah, we have an airport in here. All right, airport gentleman, come on up.
Uh, good evening, my name is Mark McElwitz, uh, airport manager here at, uh, Yankee Sixty-Five. Not a lot to report. I think Ken did a pretty thorough, uh, talk last month. But, uh, we held a training session or helped provide training for, um, a number of different police departments, some sheriff departments. And, uh, that was back on the twenty-fourth of September. Everything went well. I hope we did a good job and, uh, made it easy for everybody. I think John ran the, uh, operation. Not really much else to say. Trudy and I took a ride around the airport today and looked over a few things, but, uh, other than that, that's really all I have. Any questions from anybody?
The, how's the terminal, the new, the re?
Oh, it looks great. Yeah, it really does. It came out real well. It'd be, you know, we're gonna get a few rugs.
Yeah.
We need to get some dimensions, but yeah, I think it came out well. There's a couple other things we could do to, uh, preserve it, but, uh, all in all.
It turned out really well.
Yeah. They did a good job.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, assessor, no, DDA. Library.
Good evening, um, I'm Helen Miller. Um, I'm on the Board of Trustees for the library. Kelsey's not in town, so I thought I'd give everybody an update. We're in full swing with fall programming. And it will end with the Halloween at the library on Friday, October thirty-first. And from four to seven, goodie bags will be, uh, passed out. In November, we have a book leaf Garland class. Um, November twelfth, we're gonna have a program remembering the Edmund Fitzgerald. And of course, we're gonna participate in the Christmas in Indian River along with everybody else. And that'll be Friday, November twenty-eighth, traditionally the day after Thanksgiving. And, uh, we'll have lots of crafts going on and it's handy because it's between Mrs. Claus reading here and the parade, so we get busy. And I also would encourage anybody who's new to the area, to Indian River, um, to come into the library, check it out, um, get your library card. We're going into winter, um, so we have e-resources. We obviously have books, we have games, puzzles and lots of activities, movies to check out. Also with our reading garden, we're in the midst of planning that. Um, we've had a kickoff with Friends of the Library for our first fundraiser and it was held at the Howe Marina and it was a big success for us and, um, beautiful setting as well and gorgeous night. And we've also received donations from the Women's Club, BLPA, private donations in the library as well. So, um, we're in the midst of the planning, being finalized. Our goal is to obviously break ground next spring. With winter coming, we can't do that. So anyway, that's what's going on at the library.
Thank you. There's also tech support there for any of us who need help with technology. Oh, Helen, I was gonna ask you, are, I noticed there was a statement about Mel. Is it just down or is it just not available right now?
Um, I think it was just not available.
Oh, all right, fine, okay. Mel is another resource for, for, um, borrowing books and goodies. Okay. Parks, where did our Parks person?
She had to go pick up, I think it was a branch.
Oh, okay, okay, oh, okay.
Hello, once again, I'm Patrick McGinnis. I'm a, uh, Parks Commissioner. And both scoreboards are here. The last scoreboard that was damaged was replaced and it was installed yesterday. With the remaining grant money, we're installing LED lights at the playground area at Cooperation Park and also at the intersection by the, uh, tennis courts, the ball field and the ice rink. We're also putting LED lighting at the sledding hill. These will all be down-facing lights to... Hoodies were ordered for the Parks employees and they've been picked up and the employees think they look very nice. The new dumpster service has been completed and the old dumpster will be picked up by the end of October. We hired a seasonal employee who is working two days a week and some weekend hours. He's been a big help in getting things done and ready for the winter season. Our Ness Park meeting coincides with the election in November, so instead of having the meeting in this room, we will be in a conference room at six o'clock in the library.
And what's, that date is November fourth?
Correct. Same day as the election.
Okay.
Any questions?
Nothing. Thanks.
Kind of strange talking without complaining.
And please.
So we have had, uh, very, very busy September and actually October has been just as busy. But September is actually the busiest September we've ever had. Fortunately, nothing too major, a lot of misdemeanor traffic violations and stuff like that. Uh, we are still shorthanded. I just got news that the governor signed a bill that she is going to give, uh, ten million dollars of grant funds to sponsor police officers. So I am hoping that we, uh, can find a candidate maybe to put through the academy in January. That's still, even after January, it's seventeen weeks. But we're just gonna have to make do cuz there's just nobody applying. Wanted to touch on the boiler. The, we still got, heard back from, was it Lenovix, which is the manufacturer, the boiler company? The, uh, temperature control came, or I'm sorry, Control Solutions came. Um, we did another, uh, video thing with the company, um, tore the top of the boiler apart. They wanted to pressurize it to actually see the leak. And they did a water test and we found out that our brand spanking new water softener is actually softening the boiler water. So that has to be changed. Temperature control and Control Solutions. They said when they come back to, just so you know, the Lenovix, the, the manufacturing company, because that softener had just been put in early this spring, they said that is not what caused the damage. They just want it changed for the future.
Right.
So when Control Solution comes to install the new, uh, either new boiler or heat exchanger, uh, depending on which way this goes, um, they said for about eight hundred dollars they can fix the piping to where we're not softening the boiler water. Uh, but it does have to be fixed. So I'm hoping that, uh, they'll give us the answer that we're hoping for next week. So.
The never-ending saga.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
For as long as I've worked here.
As I've worked here.
Thank goodness those windows opened.
Any questions?
No. Anything, anything that you're seeing out on the streets that we should be aware of? New, increased, different?
Uh, well, as always, uh, you know, we do have a methamphetamine problem here. You know, we're averaging, you know, two or three methamphetamine arrests a month probably. A lot of it with our OUID arrests. So.
Okay.
It's, it's an issue and unfortunately, it's an issue everywhere.
Right. Yeah.
So.
Is it often the same individuals or?
Um, some are repeat offenders, yes.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if anyone knows of a person who may be interested in going into law enforcement?
Yes, please, get them in contact with me ASAP. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Old business or unfinished business perhaps? Um, the wa, airport water damage, we heard from Mark that that building has been completed. Again, if you can catch one of the gentlemen out there, um, it really is a nice little, it's a small terminal, but I think it's, it's very well done. And they have some great ideas to, um, help people who are coming in by plane and jet to learn more about our community and, um, maybe stay a while. They've had some campers this summer and I think that's cool. Uh, the insurance did cover those, most of those costs. We had a one thousand dollar deductible that, that the township paid, but other than that, insurance paid.
Check received in today and we'll go to the bank in the night deposit tonight.
So the total amount was twenty thousand dollars plus this additional twenty-eight hundred, so twenty-two, twenty-three thousand for that. Twenty-four, two fifty-seven, to be exact.
Unfortunately, the money came in to repair the airport in last fiscal year, so the repairs happened in this fiscal year. So it looks like they've overspent their budget, but they didn't. They had money. We've talked about asking the auditors if maybe they can do a journal entry to move some of that.
What you can do, what you can do is, um, what a, um, shoot, I'll think of it. Where they have the money set aside, it'll be a new, um, oh my gosh.
It's okay.
I'll think of it. I'll think of that. So that, and, and that can be done, um, for last year's, um?
Excellent, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
They won't, they won't move the, but.
Just so their cost center doesn't look like it's upside down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good deal.
All right, I'll think of it.
That's fine. That's fine. So there's no motion to be made, just informational on that. Um, same thing with the library quitclaim deed that was signed and notarized, um, copy and error, so now we have it corrected for all the parties that are affected. And you can see that the library board did accept this, uh, in September at their meeting as well. Jonathan, update on the health insurance policy for deceased employees? Do we have one?
Um, so I reached out to the FOP, um, grab, to get the police union, uh, I guess, uh, letter of understanding, um, added to their current contract. I figured that we could then go ahead and piggyback off that, um, for the non-unionized employees. I reached out to, uh, Mr. Warren a couple weeks ago. He said he had his draft completed. He was supposed to email it to me and I have since to hear from him. So if I wanna table this, I'll reach back out to him and share my ideas with his ideas and we'll get a township policy set.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll, um, do we wanna make a motion to table that? Or do we just table it?
We'll just table it.
We'll just table it for November and, and hope that, um, that information comes in too. All right, super, thanks, Jonathan. Uh, transient merchant ordinance, this was a holdover from a couple of the last.
Couple holdovers, yeah.
That's okay.
I followed it.
That's okay.
I gave everybody, I set aside, if I didn't give you one, and you can just look at it and we'll go over it later. Our current ordinance, if, if I'm reading the state law correctly, it says that the term transient merchant shall not apply to any of the following. And our ordinance does not spell that out. And I think that would be something important to have in there, if I'm reading it correctly. So any person selling goods, wares or merchandise that they raised, produced or manufactured by the individual offering the same for sale, they would not have to have a transient merchant, if I'm reading that right. And the same thing with a person handling vegetables, fruits or perishables, um, at any established city or village market. But I think otherwise, which to me is kind of, um, is that also when, when you're raised or produce, um, it seems like anybody who's raising their own fruits and vegetables at any stand, um, would not have to have one.
Right.
So I just, I, I just want us to clarify, I, I have not found a lot of good ordinances. Um, I did include in your packet, um, a couple different, um, applications.
Okay.
Some of those applications can get to be six pages long. I'm just thinking a simple application is all we need. But I just want you guys to look it over, let me know if you think I'm wrong, right? And, um, then we can talk, um, actually to the attorney to see about, uh, the wording for the ordinance. Okay? So it's tabled again, but.
It's okay. Tabled to November. Okay. Good. Transfer, we need to transfer some money between bank accounts from the sewer, our, what we call our R and I repair, replace and improve account to, into the general pool account. Um, as you recall, at the July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five special meeting, um, the board made a motion to transfer the money to the general pool account to cover the cost of two pump replacements in Lift Station One, the Omni Site Communications work for Lift Station One and Two, to talk to one another so they would not try to, uh, operate at the same time. And included in that was the windmiller electrical services related to that. Uh, this work has all been completed. So we need a motion to reimburse the general pool account for these repairs, um, for the cost associated with the work. And the actual? And the actual costs increased. So do we want to do two separate motions? Do we want to? And I included the, I think I included the minutes in your packet under, we approved three, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. The actual costs for that project totaled forty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To transfer that.
The full forty-two thousand.
Forty-two, one eighty-nine, ninety-one?
Yep, yeah.
Okay, and?
And I'll support that.
And any more discussion or questions?
Nope, that one's getting pretty slow, low.
I know, I know. Yeah. Uh, okay, no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Will be done tomorrow.
Very good. Oops. Update, um, the wastewater treatment plant well pump replacement. Oh, it's like the boiler and the heat system, it just never ends. So as we recall in the ice storm of April, six months ago, our well, the pump in the well at the waste, that services the wastewater treatment plant, was rendered inoperable due to groundouts and power surges. We had, uh, Bill Ramsby come pull the pump. It originally in twenty-fourteen, when that well was drilled and the pump was put down in there, it was a fifteen horse, excuse me, a ten horse, hundred and fifty gallon per minute pump. What was pulled in April of twenty-twenty-five was a one horse, twenty gallon per minute pump. We're still in conversation with Gordy Frazier. We have it narrowed down to some one, or some people made a decision to put a one horse pump in there, which has been there since twenty-sixteen. He replaced that pump twice. Uh, we're still in conversation. But in the meantime, we have a plant that's doubling in size. We have a, a commercial entity that we have entered into an agreement with to provide water. We have notified the health department that we are working on this. They've been very generous and understanding with us, but we need to get this repaired. The estimates, there are three estimates in your packet. One from Latrell and two from Ramsby well drilling or Ramsby drilling. The third, the second estimate from Ramsby is for a redundant pump. We would have two, uh, just putting it in there, food for thought and discussion.
So, um, so the second one, well, I'm kind of confused here because the one is twenty-two. And then?
Latrell, it's twenty-four.
Right, yeah, but on the Ramsby, it's forty-five or eighty-one?
Eighty-one. And that's to have, um, duplicate redundant pumps.
Which would be wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, if only.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Make a motion that we go with, uh, Ramsby.
Second it.
I do choose.
Any, uh, any further discussion? I will keep the board and the public updated on the conversations with Gordy Frazier.
Is that the twenty-two thousand?
Twenty-two nine seventy-six, yes ma'am. So we're going to accept the twenty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-six thousand and we will contact, uh, Mr. Ramsby tomorrow. Um, no more, just, any other questions? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll get that taken care of. Uh, okay, quarterly, our R and I. So according to our USDA loan, we are to transfer quarterly an amount equal to seven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars into, um, the, our R and I sewer repair, replace and improvement for
Such things we just.
Like with the, the lift station, yeah. Okay. And we have not done that yet. Uh, I think in the, in the past, sometimes we've done it annually, but again, um, so we need to transfer some funds between bank accounts.
Did we ever talk to USDA to see why they're requiring us to increase that R and I? Um, when we don't, aren't even collecting, um, O and M?
We did and they, they just said, yeah, you have to do it.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah. We were hoping to get a buy.
Yeah.
Of that. Yeah.
Okay, you got the account numbers on here.
Yes, but will you please double check those?
Yeah, I will before I do it, yeah.
So we need a motion to transfer two quarters worth of our R and I to the, between bank accounts from the additional REU account into the sewer R and I account in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred forty dollars. So will someone make a motion?
I will make that motion to move two quarters worth of, um, additional REU into the R and I sewer account totaling fourteen thousand, four hundred forty dollars.
Okay, do we have support?
Also.
Any additional questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Request or proposal legal? Are you, do we have that done or do you, will we be going to look at it in November?
Thought we were going to submit the last year's, uh,
Oh. So you want us to? Uh, it's my misunderstanding, I apologize.
So yeah, just submit the, uh, same proposal as last year.
The one we did in the fall? Yeah, or spring, or, um, yeah. Okay. So I don't have that here. The only changes would be for the year. Because the current legal, or I can bring it to the November meeting and we can get it out. If we get it out the twelfth or thirteenth, that will get it back before the end of the year.
Okay.
What do you think?
Trying to think of when the deadline was, or, uh, when, uh,
Contract.
Contract was up, yeah.
December fifteenth.
December fifteenth.
Oh. Well, there's time.
Contract is up this, wait, contract is up December fifteenth.
And then you have to give them what, thirty days or ten days?
Yeah.
That means November fifteenth.
Right. So you have to, that's November.
Okay. Okay, so we can bring that.
I think it can be published now, correct?
Are we going, uh, did, did we go out for bid?
No, that's what.
Oh, the RFP.
The RFP, I'm sorry.
Okay. I get, yeah, okay. Well, okay, let's just use the same one, just change the date, I apologize.
You're fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Three year or one year? Cause you put it out for three, but he's, his contract, so one year.
Yeah.
Be nice to have three years consistency, not somebody new every year.
It's your pleasure. Three year?
Three year. Three, I think three.
Okay, and we'll get that out, want to bring it back in November? Get it out the fifteenth back? But then we'll be passed the December board meeting. Can always call it special, but.
Or we can make a motion tonight.
What's that?
We can make a motion tonight.
To?
To, yeah.
To put it out, okay.
Put the same RFP out except for change the dates, same as three years.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes.
Do we have support?
Second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. O and M, Ms. Gall. Where everybody needs a cup of coffee.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we should have had her.
Really, I know, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have drew up right after Steve. It's the arm wrestle.
I'm not accepting any questions.
For those who do not know, this is Tammy Gall. She is with Mead and Hunt. She is one of our operators and extraordinary for our plant, keeping it up and running and healthy.
And has done an exceptional job.
Exceptional, nothing but respect for you and your team.
No more ice storms this year.
Right.
I think everybody agreed on that.
Yeah.
All right, so we know, um, the Mead and Hunt contract for wastewater, um, operations is up for renewal twelve thirty-one twenty-five. It is coming to our attention, um, with the expansion, with phase one and two coming, the wastewater plant expansion. We are now operating the new plant. Um, a lot more operations are going to be needed. Um, with that being said, we know most likely township is going to have to put, you're going to have to put the contract out for bid, most likely. Because you're going to need a full-time operator, um, in services. I'm, uh, I presented you guys with two options to try to see if you would, uh, basically to extend our current contract to buy you guys time to get the contract out. So I went ahead and made two proposals to you. Basically what our current contract is extending it out two months, same price at sixty-eight hundred dollars a month. But you would still be paying us for additional work or callouts at that ninety dollars an hour. We have the expansion contract as well that does the ninety an hour as needed. Um, with all the extra work we've been doing with the expansion work, working with performance engineers and everything, getting everything up and running. I also did a amendment to the current contract extended for two months to February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-six. I added scope to it and added money, um, cost to it. So I increased it to ninety-eight hundred a month, which would be a seventy percent of full-time operations would I feel that the township needs for the plant. Um, the extended scope I added to it would be monitoring the five new lift stations that are going into phase one. That would also be helping and monitoring any of the individual grinder stations or injector, uh, pumps that'll be going into the individual homes in phase one as they get hooked up. Uh, we do have to monitor those all winter because even if they get hooked up in winter ice, we got to make sure nobody gets flooded out, um, that, or electrical outage. That the lift stations are still going to work, we could get rainwater in there. So we still have to be able to monitor, um, those on an operational basis. Or if anybody has troubles or callouts, that we are around to help with that. The township did, uh, also purchase the new asset management plan, Silver Smith, which is going to be extremely beneficial for the wastewater system going forward. It's going to be a lot of work on everybody's part to get in all of our assets into this beautiful program. But it's going to save a lot of time and money in the long run. But to upkeep that and get all the information in there, yes, you're going to need our operators' help. So that's where the, the extra hours will also, will be starting to help with that. It's going to be coordinating with all the expansion work still with performance engineering. We're going to be coordinating, um, any issues, um, with the new expansion as people hook up, be able to help get out there to, to help performance and troubleshoot if anyone's having any troubles with lift stations. And also, we are going to have to update the mistig system. Um, you're required to have mistig for all your lines. As soon as we get those signed off, asked built for performance, we have to be able to get in there and put all those boundaries in there and get everything off to USIC, who you'd use to go out and mark all your mistigs. So what I did is, I did the second option of us operating at a seventy percent capacity versus a hundred percent capacity. So you would be three thousand dollars more a month. We'd be looking at roughly on average thirty hours a week for an operator. And right now, we're operating on average about twenty hours a week. So basically what I did was I can give you a better cost savings if we do it as a monthly fee. If we have to do it as needed time and expense, that's where the ninety dollars come, come in. So I'm able to cut the price back to the seventy-five dollars an hour because it is going to be our normal operations that you get us for thirty hours a week. And then that, if we need to change the date, it's very easily for us to do another amendment, just extend date. Um, if we need to add budget, just so, uh, we don't get red flags on either accounting side. We know how red flags look in contracts as this much, but you have reimbursables or ice storm callouts or things like that, that we just have a budget number in there of ten thousand of callouts, reimbursables. Just that way, if something happened, nobody gets red flagged when you get audited or anything like that, that shows that we're over contract. Um, if you would like to have a longer date, um, needing more time to put the RFP out, to go out for bid, um, we can extend this at any time, but that was the main reason for extending it now and doing the amendment. So you guys don't have to look, to run around, rush, get, get it out to bid. Because that's going to be the proper way that we have to do it. And no, I cannot write your RFP because I'm going to bid on it.
Okay. So.
And I will, these are drafts that I sent you. Once we come up with, um, how you would like, if you would like to do amendment and dates and things, the way you go, I will get this into my contract team's hands to do the formal edit and get you a formal contract to be able to be signed.
Okay, okay, great. So we've got a couple of things here. Keep the current contract and extend the date. Current contract is sixty-eight hundred dollars a month. Um, extending the date from December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five out to February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-six. Um, I'm going to, or go with the amended contract changing, and let me back up that sixty-eight hundred dollars a month is approximately twenty hours a week. Or we can expand the scope and expand the number of hours to about thirty a week at ninety-eight hundred dollars a month, again, expand, extending that date out to February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-six. Um, and then we also have the consultant engineering, additional operator support and engineering consultation contract, which remains at ninety an hour. Uh, but extends the date out to February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-six. How do you want to tackle this?
Refresh my memory, please, um, what are, what's our current monthly?
Sixty-eight hundred.
Thank you, okay.
Um, the price off, we also have on-call operators twenty-four seven. So that, that is also still includes your twenty-four on, twenty-four hours on-call operator as well.
There's just so many numbers.
I know, I, I know, it's.
Yeah. And I don't know how you want to do this, if you need to vote on it or how this will work. Basically, I just want to get this in front of you because I know we have to figure out an RFP, if it has to go out and what time you need. I mean, we can bring this back. Um, if you guys have more questions or want to review this, you can bring it back to your next board meeting. Cause I can get the amendments off to you guys pretty quickly. I just want to make sure you do not run out of time.
Right.
Not have an operator on site as of January first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Okay, good, so, I mean, we can look these over for a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
And bring up questions. So the biggest thing was just to get this in front of you. And that way, if you need to decide also, if you need to get that RFP out, how long it's going to take you, how long you have to have it out to the public. All the fun stuff.
There was something, you and I talked about the, it's escaped to me now. But the, the price differential seems like a lot is three thousand a month and we all go haywire over that. But when you factor in the extra ten dollars, or ten hours a week, which is an additional forty hours a month. Um, and if you were to say get called out at ninety dollars an hour, you're already over that.
And you've seen it with our expansion contract that we have as needed, when they need us at the plant for the startup.
Yes.
We don't know how long it's going to take for a startup. We're still in startup with controls.
Yes.
But, and we still got to clean out the old part of the plant, all the maintenance and everything.
Yeah.
But you saw, we were there, you had three of us at one time during the startup, trying to get everything to work right, running around crazy.
Yeah.
So it's very easily, that's, it's very pricey.
Yeah.
We know what those invoices look like and the ice storm damage. I mean, it's, we were running around twenty-four seven at that time.
Yeah.
So. So. So this is trying to, I know what, I know what we're going to be using for 30 hours a week. So it was trying to do that little bit of cost savings as much as we could.
Right.
I don't think you need the full-time operator starting January. Full-time operator's going to come in place when we know we have both sides of the plant running. We have Phase Two that's going to be hooking up, Phase One's going to be hooked up, that park's going to come on. So come May, it's going to be, both sides of the plane are going to be operating full boarding. You're going to need a full-time operator at that point.
So, again, if we were to say, okay, we're going to go with the upgraded, expanded scope contract, and everything's going well, and we say, you know what, we just want to extend the date and we want to go to 100% come June 1. That, if we can make that change, change, because we can bring it back to the board at that time.
Yes. And we can, and then say, if you get RFP out and it goes out to bid and you want whoever wins the bid to start, say, February 15th, our contracts are very easily, you have, we can do it by writ and cancel the contract at that time very easily and redate everything, so.
Okay, okay. It's a lot to look over. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just think.
I want a little bit to get ahead for us.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just want to say, thank her for thinking ahead and coming up with this to help us out.
Keep pride in us, yes. Questions for Tammy?
She said no questions.
Oh, that's right.
You know how to get a hold of me.
I do, I do.
Now, we can, I can come back in if we need to sit down and go over the different options. So you can present it at the next board meeting, or what do you need to do to get the RFP out, so.
Okay, okay. So.
Did you have a copy of that original RFP that you guys responded to?
I actually dug really hard and my marketing lady found pictures of it and I did send it to Trudy. Trudy does have a copy of it.
Fair.
Yeah.
Let's not reinvent the wheel.
Exactly.
At that way, at least you know what, because I know we had a hard time finding the original one when it got sent out. And I believe Gordy Frazier would have done the original RFP.
Yeah, yeah.
And probably Performance will have to send this one out. Because they won't be, they don't have operators qualified enough to bid on it, so.
Right, right. Okay.
I was going to say, and neither did the other one, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're, we're so different, it's so different now. It's so different. Well, board?
I'm comfortable with the 3,000. But if you want to wait a month, I'm comfortable also.
I could, would you like me to go ahead and officially get a official proposal to you at the 3,000 and get it over into your hands so you can review it that way?
And then we can address it at the November?
Yes.
All right, that sounds good. So you'll get us an official proposal?
That means you just have to see us one.
We'll remember to put you up higher.
Yes. Yeah, we'll put you higher on the list. All right, so for review at the November meeting. Perfect. All right, so that's all over. Thank you. Thank you. Okey-dokey, Smokey. Uh, RFP request for bid for the wastewater treatment plant cold storage, which is in the grant scope. And I am meeting with Erin next week to review that. That is one of those items that has to go to EPA for review, as well as the advertisement, as well as the RFP for the screen and the advertisement. And so there's nothing in here just to say he's working on it. Okay. Rapid infiltration basins, ribs. There are three bids in there. We're, we've proposed doing three, we have five. They've never been cleaned out, we have trees growing in them. Eagle probably, help me out Tammy, Eagle probably won't let us fly. We have to clean them all, it's just never been done, okay? Take the trees out, scrape off four to six inches of soil.
He needs to be part of our yearly maintenance program.
Yep, and it, so, we started with three only because of the cost. We just felt, I, I was a little overwhelmed at $30,000 to $50,000 to do this. This is the first whack. Not to say we can't do all five at once, but we can do three now and then two next year and then get on a, a maintenance program with them. I do it all to be perfectly above board. There is one bid in here from Schley's Land Development. He was very honest, saying he would not be able to get to this if he were awarded until spring. And of course, again, we're up against the weather.
Tammy? What's your thought on that?
I didn't get to see, I didn't get to compare all the costs.
Well, it's a huge difference.
Can it wait till spring?
Yeah, I guess that was my question.
We've, I've been pushing for this since 2018, so.
How come I never heard about that?
Probably because of my contact, my contact was always the supervisor.
It never made it all the way down, okay.
There was always more important things, so. I think six months. Eagle's not going to, I already tried to get Eagle out there for our plant startup. And since they wouldn't even come out for that, I, the worst they're going to do is a smack on the hand and tell us, got to keep these cleaned out, you got to get the trees out.
Yeah.
And they can ding us, but they're not going to find us. It's just going to be a bad non-compliance issue.
Well, and I know Jen has said, you know, what's their criteria and they don't have any, so.
And they had a problem with one of the guys that did the proposal, who may not be working.
Right, that's, even after spring?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, yeah. Yeah, no, so that, I mean.
So this bid really doesn't mean anything?
He bid and then he had a health incident and he said he's come, may come back, but. And there are not a lot of people out there that do this, we're finding.
I prefer someone that has experience with wastewater. Than someone that's just a excavator owner that hasn't done with water or wastewater before.
Thank you.
A little bit of specialty, where they have to know, you know, what the lines are, how to maneuver the equipment and they're not damaging any riprock that we have in there. I saw firsthand at a location, wasn't the Sevastovsky, it was a different location, that they hired someone to come in and do some prices that you guys have, guys never done them, and everything is caving and falling and, and.
Okay.
And disaster.
Thank you. Of the two bids that we have, are either one of these experienced with doing this or no?
GFL.
GFL, a lot of experience, and then you should have.
Northwest Michigan contract.
Well, Jen, because they both have lots of experience with wastewater.
I don't have the Northwest, and I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, it wasn't in the original package.
Oh, there it is. Oh, it's over here, okay, sorry.
Did you get?
Yeah. I was going to say.
I'm just going to get one pack and we're going to all rally round.
I was just, when you were saying three, I was looking through.
GFL is one of the ones that already that we used to clean our big lift stations. They do all the big major cleanouts, like further ones cleaning up the old plant. We're able to come with the big acre yards, pull out this liquid in the old plant, put it in the new plant for us.
Okay.
And drain, sprayed everything through.
And they're less expensive, so.
The only thing on the GFL quote estimate was the fuel surcharge 13.8%. That is what it is.
Both contractors have this good work out there.
Okay. Oh, sorry. So do we have a, a motion to select an contractor for the rib cleanout, for three rib cleanouts? Dare we say this fall?
I would say, yeah. Well, how long, how long are the bids good for?
These are good for 30 days and of course, I'm sure weather dependent, but, yeah, they're both good for 30 days.
So fuel surcharge, we don't know how much that will be.
Yeah, did you bring your phone?
Of course I did.
13.8% of 24/2. It looks like it applies to everything, all fuel-consuming items, operator and subs.
And I believe both contractors with those two proposals too, would also do a multi-year after we get the original done. Both of them would be capable of doing a multi-year contract.
Yeah, and I know there was some discussion as to whether once or twice a year would be necessary. Maybe they could tell us once they cleaned it, cleaned them out, to see.
Well, if you take the 13.8% times it on top of the biggest bid, or the highest number for GFL, 24,200, that takes that contract up to $27,539.60. So it's still under the 27,359. This GFL is much more detailed compared to the Northwest Michigan contract, it's just kind of like blah, blah, blah. And I don't know if it's another 13.8 on top of their 28,359.
He doesn't say, he just says mobilization, but he doesn't give, you know, I don't know.
No, he only saying the total bid.
Yeah.
It's a 28,359, there's no idea.
Yeah, those four items.
I'll make a motion that we go to GFL.
Okay.
Do I support that?
And is this going to have to come out of the additional REU funds?
Repair, replace, improve.
I know, but it's not in there.
So can we take money from additional REU?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
I'll mark that down then.
The funding covered at the same time?
Yeah.
Can you go straight from additional REU to pay the bill, or does it have to go into RRI to pay the bill?
Just to, just go, just to pay the bill.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the, award the estimate to GFL and to pay that estimate from the additional REU. Shall we push to get it done this fall?
Yeah.
If possible. Motion made by Sue, support by Laurie. Any other questions or comments? Done? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries you down this.
We did have this.
Okay, new business, finally. Um, so fireworks.
Yes.
The last meeting, we talked, we suggested that perhaps we would want to establish a fireworks subcommittee. Patrick McGinnis suggested it. He was kind enough to provide a, a, um, agenda of, for a committee if we were, choose to put one together, to kind of put together some big festival-type celebration for July of 2026, for the country's 250th birthday. I think there's some interest, I think, I thought I heard some interest at a DDA meeting about doing some, something more full-blown on a weekend. And I don't know about the chamber, but I can't imagine that they would not want to have a little more hoopla.
So how about a committee maybe from, one from the DDA, one from Parks, and one from the Chamber?
Sounds like a plan.
How about one from the school?
One from the school, Jim?
Oh, great idea.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ellen.
So, okay, so we have a DDA rep, a Chamber rep? Did someone say Chamber rep?
I did.
Parks and the school, so four, sounds like a plan, okay.
Just going to find those people.
Yep. Well, so we have a, a DDA meeting coming. I can call the Chamber, we know Parks, we can grab them and.
Could we also open that up to a member of the general public?
Absolutely.
Good idea, thank you. I didn't like four.
So we should.
Right, right.
Okay, how, can we put this, I know you did a survey, or there was a survey out on the socials for interest. I don't remember what, that's been a few weeks since I last looked at that. Do we want, how do we want to handle this? Do we want to put it out there on the socials? Do...
There was a poll that was out there.
Yes.
And with, you know, suggestions and people with checkboxes or add your own. And it's still there. I don't know if it's, the people have used it recently. But I can print it out anyway, it gives you a percentage.
Okay, good.
26%, whatever, of what the consensus was. The last time I looked at it, the, um, most people wanted it at the beach because that was traditional versus off-ration park. They liked the idea of having something after the parade where you could, you know, have, whether it's, you know, food or potluck or, you know, pies or whatever. It was a lot of interest in doing something. And that would kind of tie, because we have the fireworks on Friday, they're Friday, right?
Yes, I think so, yes.
So you have the fireworks on Friday and then, you know, the parade on the 4th of July and something after that.
Right.
So, is it Friday or is it Sunday?
I think it's Friday.
Oh, I'm looking right now.
The two days would kind of tie things together.
Actually, it's Saturday.
And actually, they have more events.
The 4th is Saturday.
Well, the fireworks are on Friday.
The fireworks are on Friday.
Yeah, okay.
Didn't Mrs. McClutchie done a best, didn't she host something at her house?
She used to do the pies.
Pies, that's what I remember. Was that after, was that 4th of July weekend or was that a different weekend?
It was right after the parade. We did, we discussed that, that came up at the DDA.
Okay, I remember that.
Yeah.
So, you know, there was interest in having something after the parade, rather than just the parade and then everybody's.
Right.
And we did want the parade, not, not, you know, earlier in the day. So I can print out, I'll go back and look at it and I can print out.
Okay.
When it's there, or this shows you the percent, and then I'll send you a PDF or whatever.
Okay, all right.
I'll just leave it up there and people can.
Yeah, so we can promote it, more people will want it, okay, great.
So, need a motion to create a subcommittee? Fireworks subcommittee, I don't know what you want to call it, does it matter?
2015 celebration.
There you go.
Sure, is there a budget yet?
We budgeted, we budgeted, what did we budget?
15,000.
15,000 for fireworks. So that would be something to add to the discussion for the committee, I believe.
And we are busy here, so the sooner you can nail the provider down.
Yes, yes.
Were we?
She was on vacation and we were in discussion with her before and she just said the 4th of July would be prohibitively expensive because we would have to boot someone from the 4th and that was, way exceeded our budget.
And, and it, now, I mean, and I'm going to go back, oh, Gordon's gone. It was always went into discussion, but the fact is that if it's on the 4th, we're paying
Yes.
double time for the officers and everything. So that is why typically we did not have it on the 4th. Because it does increase a bunch of budgets.
Yeah, yeah, and who knows, you know, maybe this committee will just be, wouldn't it be nice to have some young people?
Yeah.
They might come up with something really novel.
Yeah.
You know, as far as making this a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, fun, um, fun events. So, motion to create the subcommittee and shake the shrubbery. fun events, so, motion to create the subcommittee and shake the shrubbery for involvement. Creation of the sub, two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration.
So moved.
Okay.
Not a support.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no, unanimous.
So get something, we'll have to get something out on the.
On the social, or, yeah.
Are you gonna advertise on the township website, saying that you're looking for volunteers for?
Yeah. Uh, okay, the sewer bills. Good lord. Okay, um, so we have the performance engineering bills, do you want me to read through all of these memos and all of these bills again?
No.
No, okay, sorry, no, thank you, thank you.
Take a look at them.
Take a look.
They can go out online, check it out.
I already, you have a hard rate intent. Except for this forty-three thousand.
Yeah. Um. Yeah. And he outlined, summarize the change order, yeah? Yeah, that Walton's change order is a big one, the net result was an increase of fourteen thousand four ninety-five. Any questions on those sewer bills? Or change orders for Phase One, Phase Two, and Plant? Motion to approve payment of the bills.
Motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented in the board pet. And.
Okay. Questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no, unanimous. Okay, motion carries. Sewer rate study, Ms. Fisher.
Okay. So many years ago, um, we went through, and we took a class, and was able to, come up with a study, it's a very confusing study. Bobby put a lot of, lot of hours into it. Um, but, this here not only goes into just the rate, but it also looks into to make sure that our special assessments are good, that, um, that we're gonna have the funding that we need. I mean, that is one thing that I've been noticing, looking at, we have a lot of additional money in the, um, special assessment, and that's for pay, from payoffs, that we're gonna have to, um, get those together, and get them to USDA, but it's gonna take a little bit of legwork, and I don't know, I was wondering if BSNA has a way to say, okay, these payoffs, without just going through the general ledger.
And that's one of my things on my list to call BSNA, 'cause I have, that I wanna make sure it's done correctly.
Yeah, it's, I've been mulling that through, trying to think of, um, so, we discussed this, and, actually Trudy and I discussed it, just Trudy and I. Um, I just think this will be a worthwhile, um, expense, and I don't. We're not all, um, don't have the time, we, we don't have the, um, expertise.
Right.
In this.
And this will give me time, in case I wanna take the class and tackle it, this gives me a little time to do that.
Yeah.
If eventually I.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, there was three of us that took it, and, um, one of, one out of the three got it, you know, I mean, it just, um, and, and then to keep it up, and, um, I just feel a lot more comfortable knowing that we're okay with where we're at.
Especially moving forward with these two big, three big expansions and possibly a, a third.
Yeah.
We have to set ourselves up for success out of the gate, we can't keep chasing. And I, I talked to Tammy about this, and she said City of Potaski uses, um, Venzinsky and Company, uh, and they get, and, um, our assessor sits on two utility boards, and he, he said this was a good, um, it was a good company, at a very fair price. He said there is someone down in Higgins Lake, Houghton Lake area, that his uti, the two utility boards he sits on, and he said it was nearly double this, with the same type of data, so, uh, he, he was, he said to give it a good hard look and considerations.
And again, this would have to come out of the additional REU. For the expense, 'cause the, uh.
Yeah, so, do we have a motion to, um, pursue this?
I'm, uh, make a motion that we pursue, um, hiring.
Venzinsky.
Venzinsky and Company to do, um, a sewer, um, financial, um, hang on here, I've got it, I got it, sewer rate analysis study.
Okay.
And special assessment analysis.
And a special assessment analysis.
Do we have support?
Support.
And further discussion, questions?
Who's gonna go?
Well, they're, they're gonna come here, or, yeah, yeah, and, and I think that includes two, two meetings, um, with the gen, with the board. I, um.
Yes.
It's, it's quite in, intensive.
Yeah, and we can, um, we can try and make sure that we schedule so that, well, we'll have to make it a special meeting then, but that would be fine too. You know, maybe public would like to come and hear their, hear their information, so that would be good too. Okay, so, I'm sorry.
I guess, when will we be thinking of this?
Well.
This year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as soon as they can schedule this in. I would think.
Yes, it's like, I think there's like sixteen weeks of work. You know, they're going to be asking us for data, uh, going back, I believe, what, well, they're saying here, two to four years of audits and budgets, and past history and goals for the future, um, and then they have a, you know, there's different steps. I, 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 it's, it's not without its work for us.
Kickoff meeting alignment, what's on your mind, Coles?
I'll help.
Yes, especially as we move out of this construction phase into the operations side.
And they can kind of foreshadow into Phase Two?
They could, oh yeah, they're gonna look at all of that.
And then if you, when you look in here, and they talk about, uh, twenty twenty-seven, an update on the rates, and, and if you look at their appendix, one of the things I noticed was the returning customers. Now, whether they took advantage of the, the, they did it one year, and then two years later, did the rate study again.
Say two thousand dollars?
Yeah, uh, but I thought that was interesting, or maybe they too had an expansion and thought, yeah, this is a great time to do this. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The charter franchise renewal, it's just a letter, just a shot across the bow, saying, hey, we're gonna do this. Um, their intention is to renew the franchise in July of twenty-eight. And I'll get with Pat and Vanessa, and make a call to her about that. DDA bylaw changes.
Okay, um, at, oh, there it is, no, this is two-sided, I'm sitting here looking for that, okay. Um, at one of the DDA meetings, we realized that our bylaws did not include, the number of years of, of term, the term, um, and number of years in the term of, uh, term of office, I'll get my words out. And then, so we, we went through all of it, um, at the very end, on the last page, I added there what the, um, amendments are.
Okay.
So there's a, um, added requirement of a resident within the district. Um, also in Section One, um, added the requirement of taking the constitutional oath of office. Um, Section Three added the number of years in a term of office. And then Section Two, without having the other one here, you wouldn't see, no, but, we amended by combining Sections Two and Three, removal of requirement that members may not serve in the same office for more than two consecutive terms, and added a timeline if the election for officers is not done in May. Um, and this was just by, um, looking at many other DDA's bylaws, and that's what we came up with, and we need, um, your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the DDA bylaws as amended? And then they. Okay. And support?
And I'll support it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, very good, public comment on anything?
Um, I had just a couple of things, um, County Planning Commission, we met a week ago, and, um, we met with NMCod, we're starting our master plan, uh, for the county, and of course, it includes Tuscarawo Township, and pretty much all the other townships, except for, I think there's three that have their own planning and zoning. So, um, in December, mid-December, we will be putting out the survey. A lot of you participated in the, um, Tuscarawo Township survey a couple of years ago. It'll be similar, we'll be putting it out on social media, um, um, we've already, uh, BLPA probably maps, uh, we're contacting all the lake associations to see that they get it out. I don't know when the tax bills go out. The next one's last time, we put a little link on the back of the tax bill, it was like five cents to do that, so, um, maybe it's a tax bill in December, is there something that goes out in December?
End of November, yeah, I probably could edit the tax bill itself to have that.
Okay.
Whatever it is.
Well, we gotta get our question, we're working on the questions, we also, I, I think, Trudy, did you get a letter from Mike about looking for volunteers, um, to be on the, um, committee that's looking at the survey and going, running through the questions, so we'll be looking for volunteers. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about real quick was, um, the payroll approval that you guys just did. Um, I thought in May that we had realized that we had missed some of the payrolls, and so, I was sitting there, I was going back through all the board packets, and in June, we actually did have the, uh, January through June payroll, um, in the board packet. April, or May, we had April, so I think we got all of them, or current, um, through there, I think the only ones that we're missing maybe is November and December. They weren't putting them in before, I, I don't, I think it was just something we kept carrying through for a small, short period of time. That's it.
Good, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, public comments are closed, board comments.
I had lots of fun.
Enjoyed all that warm weather, the time you got to spend off and out?
No, yeah, right here, you see my Ford Explorer parked on the parking lot.
We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second. And all in favor, aye. Meeting adjourned at eight forty-nine.